Welcome to everybody who's here. It's always like this, every council meeting, so it's amazing fan seats, but welcome. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none will declare the agenda as approved. And any announcements from members of council for anything that's upcoming? No? Well, I'll make the announcement. This Wednesday is the 2nd anniversary of Bridgewater Transit, and we're holding like a birthday party. Is that what you were going to say?
No, I was going to say something else.
From 11:00 to 1:00 over at the Shore Center in the mall. Everyone's invited. There is cake, so it's officially a party. And we'll celebrate the 2nd anniversary of Bridgewater Transit. Deputy Mayor Tanner, you have something?
No, I was just going to mention Afterglow coming up on Saturday night, an exciting event full of all kinds of artists. And King Street will be closed from Empire to Dufferin, I believe. And so it should be a fun evening for all, so.
Yeah, and with that, there is music on Friday night at Dijon's Park as part of Afterglow as well. Anything else? I always look at Council Thorburn to see if there's something going on at the museum.
There's always something going on at the museum. I just don't have anything on my agenda for the moment.
Is that the good news that we just got? Is that, are we able to share that good news yet, or is that with the...
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Stay tuned for good news about the museum.
I'll have a report next meeting.
Okay. Well, we'll just have to wait. Everyone should come back for the next meeting, a burst of exciting news. We had a couple of proclamations on our website. One is Right to Know Week is September 23rd to 29th, so that's in conjunction with Freedom of Information and our proclamation that we are transparent and the public has a right to know what's going on at council. And the other is Wrongful Conviction Day, which is October 2nd, talking about those who have lost freedom due to being wrongly convicted. So with that, we are down to Presentation of Achievement Awards. And we're here to celebrate our Bridgewater Barracuda Swim Club and another amazing season. And I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Tanner, who has the privilege of reading out all the awards.
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you for the privilege of reading. Is Jonathan Haas here? I don't see him at all, no? So when you hear your name, just come down, and the mayor will present you with your medal and so on. So Jonathan Haas competed in one boys 17 and over 50 free, 100 butterfly and free. Competed in one boys 15 and over 200 medley relay, and he was named to the Nova Scotia Summer Swimming All-Star Team. The medal he will receive is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, Boys 17 and Over 50 Free 100 Butterfly and Free, Boys 15 and Over 200 Medley Relay and All-Star Team. So that's Jonathan Haas. Adam Culbert, I saw him. There he is. Adam competed in one boys 15 to 16 50 back. Competed in one boys 15 and over 200 medley relay, sorry, medley and free relay. And his medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion. The parents must want to take pictures. Of course they do. Boy. Aw, come back, Adam. Adam.
That's all right, it's going to be on TV.
Travis Smith, is Travis here? I didn't see him either. No. Travis competed in one boys 15 and over 200 medley and free relay, and his medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, Boys 15 and Over 200 Medley and Free Relay, Travis Smith. Logan Sangster. Where are the boys tonight? Logan?
Football.
Football. Logan competed in one boys 15 and over 200 medley and free relay. His medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, Boys 15 and Over 200 Medley and Free Relay, Logan Sangster. Lucas Sangster, probably studying hard at Dell. He competed in one, the boys 17 and over 400 free. Competed in one, the boys 15 and over 200 free relay, and is named to the Nova Scotia Summer Swimming All-Star Team as well. Do I don't have to do the medal inscription each time, do I? Okay. Nikaila White. Do I see Nikaila? No. Oh, there she is. Come on down, Nikaila. She was named to the Nova Scotia Summer Swimming All-Star Team. There. And your medal is inscribed Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, All-Star Team, Nikaila White. Sarah Johnson, I think I saw Sarah here giving me a hard time where I parked. Sarah competed in one girls 15 to 16 50 back. Competed in one girls 15 and over 200 medley and free relay. Her medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, Girls 15 16 50 back, Girls 15 and Over 200 Medley and Free Relay, Sarah Johnson. McKenna Lipsit. Must be at football practice. Competed in one girls 15 and over 200 medley relay. Laura Campbell. Let's see, Laura. Oh. Speaking of, no. Volleyball. Laura competed in one girls 15 and over 200 medley relay. Peyton Lipsit, she's not here, obviously, her sister isn't here. Competed in one girls 15 and over 200 medley and free relay. Jada Roy. Jade is not here either. Competed in one girls 15 and over 200 free relay. Mia Heartling. Volleyball. These athletes are all over the place. Competed in one girls 15 and over 200 free relay. Nathan Fugier, I saw him, sitting next to his father, Rick. Competed in one boys 17 and over 50 and 100 back, 50 butterfly, named to the Nova Scotia Summer Swimming All-Star Team. His medal is inscribed Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, Boys 17 and Over 50 and 100 back, 50 butterfly, Nathan Fugier. Kaylin Risser. Didn't see her either. Competed in one girls 17 and over and 100 back. Paige Gladwin. Paige is never unhappy. She competed in one girls 11 and 12 200 free relay. Her medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Provincial Swimming Champion, Girls 11 and 12 200 free relay, Paige Gladwin. There we go. Reagan Lipsit. She walked here by herself. Competed in one girls 11 and 12 200 free relay. Sophie Dow. Sophie's here, there she is. Sophie competed in one girls 11 12 200 free relay. Her medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Provincial Swimming Provincial Champion, Girls 11 12 200 Free Relay, Sophie Dow. Angelina Butt. Dad's here, she must be there. There you go. Dad and mom are here. Competed in one girls 11 and 12 200 free relay. Her medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Provincial Champion, Girls 11 12 200 Free Relay, Angelina Butt. Jonas Talbot. There he is. Jonas competed in one boys 13 14 200 free relay, named to the Nova Scotia Summer Swimming All-Star Team. His medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, Boys 13 14 200 Free Relay and All-Star Team, Jonas Talbot. Nathan Culbert. Nathan competed in one boys 13 14 200 free relay. His medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, Boys 13 14 200 Free Relay, Nathan Culbert. My favorite swimmer, Sam Tanner. Competed in one boys 13 and 14 200 free relay. His medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, Boys 13 14 200 Free Relay, Sam Tanner. Parker Doggett. There's Parker. Competed, completed in one, boys 13 14 200 free relay. His medal is inscribed 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, Boys 13 14 200 Free Relay, Parker Doggett. Don't go anywhere, Parker. The whole club's coming down now. Bridgewater Barracuda Swim Club, so all swimmers, come on down. So they are the 2019 Nova Scotia Summer Swimming Provincial Champion, High Point Team. And this is the ninth consecutive year that the Barracudas have won the provincial title. I repeat, ninth. There you go. Cuddle up. Congratulations. So the question on everybody's mind is, can you do it for a 10th season?
Thank you very much, and again, congratulations to the Barracudas. And of course, I forgot to mention that Monday, September 30th, is Medic Monday. We have a, we do have proclamation that we made last week, I believe. There will be a flag raised on the 30th. By the way. Where is everybody?
I've remembered the announcement.
There you go.
Not too late?
No, not too late. Go ahead.
We're excited to share with you that the Des Brésé Museum scored a record 93.9% overall on our recent evaluation. This is an increase from 2016 when we scored 91.2, and we were ranked the top museum in Nova Scotia out of 101 museums participating. This is made possible through your support, volunteerism, and pride in our community museum. And thank you for helping us achieve our highest score yet.
Congratulations to the Des Brésé. That is a phenomenal score.
Excellent.
Thank you to the museum commission, the Friends of Des Brésé, the staff, especially Lynette.
I think she sleeps there.
She certainly gives us more than 100%.
Yes, she does.
And so thanks to everyone who made that possible. We don't have any time delegations. Are there any members of the public that are here and wish to be a delegation, speaking before council? Seeing none. Our next item is the minutes of September 9th, regularly scheduled town council meeting. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, we will declare the minutes as approved, and go down to planning items. Application for development agreement, 18 Hurdle Drive. And our planner, Ms. Childs, is here to walk us through the presentation.
So yeah, staff received an application for a development agreement at 18 Hurdle Drive to construct a multi-unit residential development. And the subject property is located there. It's currently vacant forested land, and it's in between Aberdeen Road and McNeil Drive. So the zoning of this property is high-density residential, and it's surrounded by a mix of zones, the single-unit residential zone, urban commercial, high-density residential, and La Havre commercial zone. And the surrounding uses are single and multi-unit residential, with some commercial nearby as well. The high-density residential designation on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy identifies all lands intended for Bridgewater's densest form of residential development. And this designation is applied in different parts of town, including some along the periphery of the downtown like this, where higher density is encouraged. So multi-unit residential dwellings are permitted through a few different planning processes depending on their size and what zone they're in. And a development agreement is required for this development because multi-unit residential dwellings between 21 and 30 units per acres are permitted by development agreement. This is based on the size of the property, which is slightly over an acre, so 38 units may be permitted on this property. I'm also going to go over a few things that the development agreement will specify, so it specifies that use, as well as uses permitted in the high-density residential zone, as included in the land use bylaw. It states that the height and massing of the building shall be in reasonable accordance with the elevation drawings, and this is one of four elevation drawings that have been provided so far. It shows that the building is three stories, each story being approximately 10 feet in height, and there's also one additional level of partially exposed parking. It's exposed at the front, where cars can drive in. And the development agreement would state that the exterior design of the building shall be in reasonable accordance with the renderings, and this is one of the five renderings that have been provided by the architect. So it shows different things like the breakup of different materials, the location of entrances, the inclusion of balconies, and how the building is structured and kind of laid out. So a detailed landscaping plan has not been received yet, but it will be received prior to the issuance of a development permit, and it will be to the satisfaction of the development officer. The landscaping will be in reasonable accordance with that plan, and that includes things like trees, shrubs, grassed areas, and non-disturbance zone or buffers. And this is not the most up-to-date site plan, but it's in color, so I chose to show it, as it shows the buffered areas, so in light green on both sides. The buffering must be substantively in the same location and area as shown, and that's to minimize disturbance to the neighboring properties, because there are some single-unit residential dwellings on both sides there. It's also included in the development agreement that no existing trees beyond 3 inches in caliper will be removed unless dead or diseased, and that's only then with the approval of the development officer. And there's also information or requirements for setbacks. So setbacks from the property lines shall be no less than 20 feet towards Hurdle Drive at the front, 22 feet towards, oops, towards Aberdeen on this side, 35 feet towards McNeil Drive, and then 18 feet to the rear of the property. It's also included that a 20% variance of these buffers and the setbacks may be considered, and that's allowed to allow for slight changes once the developer actually gets on there, but they're quite confident in what they've provided us. Amenity space is also included in the development agreement, and it must be equal to or greater than 8,208 square feet, and that's the amount that's required in the land use bylaw for this kind of development. And it must include but is not limited to balconies for all units, minimum 600 square foot interior communal space, and an exterior barbecue patio, and that's what's shown down here in the back. And the property owner shall construct a driveway and walkway, and 48 vehicle parking spaces are required, which is a calculation that's included in the land use bylaw. They are proposing 43 indoor in that bottom level, and then five outdoor spaces, and there's enough accessible parking spaces as well. There's also a minimum of 19 bicycle spaces required, both indoor and outdoor. A detailed wastewater flow study and offsetting measures are required as part of the development agreement, and they are being discussed with engineering currently. A detailed stormwater management plan is also required before a development permit can be issued. And it states that all post-development peak stormwater is equal to or less than the pre-development conditions. So when reviewing the application, the municipal planning strategy policies for general and residential development were reviewed. So it, we analyzed things like reducing conflict between surrounding uses, enhancing and preserving the character of the area, supporting full range of housing options and styles, supporting walking and cycling, amenity space requirements, the aim to densify residential dwellings and areas, and maximizing existing infrastructure. The municipal planning strategy also has some policies for open space, and so there are requirements for green spaces and amenities, the retention of trees and vegetation, and like I mentioned before, the post-development peak flows equal to or, sorry, equal or less than pre-development. The municipal planning strategy also has policies related to development agreements specifically that must be analyzed. And these are the compatibility of use with the area and uses nearby, the compatibility of the building in the area, landscaping requirements, the adequacy of infrastructure, so things like streets and sewers, access by emergency services, active transportation, parking, and environmental impacts, which is things like slopes and floods and previous contamination. So a public participation meeting was held on August 28th here in council chambers at 6:00 PM, and 14 members of the public attended. We also received an email and a letter. Some of the main concerns were traffic, so there was discussion about the removal of the restricted access at Hurdle and Aberdeen, and there was kind of, people said both that removing it would cause traffic problems, but also keeping it would add traffic into the more residential area, although a traffic analysis has been done and is being looked at by engineering. There was also concern just to have enough off-street parking, so it was said by staff that they have met the requirements of the land use bylaw. There was concerns about wastewater and stormwater just affecting neighboring properties, and it was specified again that both of those detailed plans are coming in. There were questions and concerns about the impact on the timeline of construction, so staff confirmed that the, I'm sorry, that the applicant said that they were intending to begin construction in the spring, and staff outlined the development application timeline as well, so people are aware. And there were questions about short-term rentals, and staff confirmed that the town doesn't have regulations associated with these, but the applicant mentioned that their practice is to restrict short-term rentals with their lease agreements. So it's recommended that council give first consideration to the development agreement for 18 Hurdle Drive, and that council schedule a public hearing during the regular meeting of council on October 28th at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you, Kancy. Questions from members of council? Council McGuinness?
Yes, if there, this may be a question for a town engineer. If there is a, we changed the Hurdle Drive so that when you exited onto Aberdeen, you could go left. There's a cost to doing that. Who pays for that?
Typically, all costs would be at the developer's expense.
Questions from members of council? Hearing none, someone prepared to make a motion, please. Council McDonnell.
I move the town council of the town of Bridgewater to give first consideration to the development agreement as contained in Appendix A of Document 19-104A for 18 Hurdle Drive, and schedule a public hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting on October 28th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in council chambers at Town Hall.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Graves for the discussion.
Question building.
Yeah. Nice second building. Obviously, this goes through the process. It's open. The public has obviously another chance to speak to council as it goes to the public hearing as well. Hearing no other questions, all those in favor, those opposed, motions carried. Thank you. Going down to item number 10, reports and recommendations. We have a presentation from Regional Emergency Management Organization. Angela's here to, well, you've had a busy start to your time, your organization. Yeah, so welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. So I wanted to give a bit of an introduction to myself and just kind of update as to what the process will be for Remo going forward. Did you want me to put up Sharon?
Got it.
So I am Angela Henhofer. I am the new Regional Emergency Management Coordinator. To give you a little bit of my background, I've been in emergency management for about 10 years, have recently come back from Fort McMurray. I was there for the, well, right after the wildfire. I was there for two and a half years, and when I came back to Nova Scotia, I was in Windsor and West Hans on a contract. So I have recently just moved to Lunenburg County, so I've got the five units. So I've got town of Bridgewater, Mahone Bay, town of Lunenburg, municipality of Chester, and municipality of Lunenburg. So all five units are underneath of the umbrella of Remo. It is a full-time role, which has been increased from where Heather was at for 14 hours. So it has, the structure itself has changed, and I'll go through the process as we go through the slides. So within Remo, we will always follow the Nova Scotia Emergency Management Act. Town of Bridgewater also has a bylaw, and then there has been an inter-municipal agreement with those five units that was signed in January 2017. So those are all of the bylaws and acts that I will always be following to make sure that we're abiding by anything to do with emergency management within Nova Scotia. So within that, we've got four pillars of emergency management. So we've got the mitigate and prepare, which is always done prior to an emergency, and then respond, which happens during, which is what we all just saw during Hurricane Dorian, and then after is where we go into recovery. So some of the things that have changed is, when Heather was here, she would have worked really just on the response and moved into recovery. I'll be looking at a little bit more of a holistic approach with regard to emergency management and looking at all of the four pillars, so the before, during, and after. It'll always be looked at the planning cycle, making sure that we're always looking at an all-hazards approach, which really means wherever we can have those consistent things that are going on, no matter what the emergency is, whether it's an evacuation, a flood, a hurricane, all of those consistent things that happen, that's the all-hazards approach. So how we actually activate the incident command process, the emergency coordination center, all of that is what we look at from the all-hazards approach. And we will be looking at the whole cycle with an emergency management as we move through the process. So the work plan, I have started meeting with a lot of the key stakeholders, and then the hurricane came. So it was paused for a little bit, and I'm going to be just starting back up toward the end of this weekend into next week, where what I'm trying to do is meet with all of the CAOs, the AECs, as well as the people who are on the advisory committee, trying to get an idea as to where we're at, what their vision is, as well as if I can see any gaps. And then from that information, I'm actually going to be taking that information to the CAOs to develop a work plan as to what we're going to focus on within the next six months to a year, and it will kind of go up the chain from there. And then finally, and this you probably all witnessed recently, is how the information flows. So as a Remo coordinator, I receive a lot of information from different units, so police, fire, EHS, Scotia Business and Valley Communications, Nova Scotia EMO, and a variety of stakeholders. I also feed information back to them, and then from there, I share it also down to, or out to, the CAOs and the AECs, and the CAOs will present information out to you. So that's how it will work, and hopefully it worked smoothly during the response, which I think it did. And then you'll also know where you're getting the information from as well. So through Tammy will be your main point of contact. One of the focuses that I will also be having is outreach, so public education and outreach is really important, getting our stakeholders engaged and residents. The more that they can understand where we're at from an emergency management perspective, the more resilient our community can be. So when the lowest level is resilient, we can all become a little bit more resilient. So if there are any community groups that would like to have public education or a presentation, happy to do so. Just link in through me to have a presentation, and I'll be happy to go up to any community organization from there. We currently have a Twitter page, it's Remo EMO, and Facebook trying to work toward a consolidated one, working with comms to see if that's a great approach or not. And then we also have each of the five units have their own web pages and Twitter as well. And we'll always be focusing on the three standard 72 hours, which is know the risks, make a plan, get a kit, and then the new one, which is stay informed as well. So that is my presentation. Does anybody have any questions that I could answer?
Anyone have questions? I'll just say, I thought everything went as well as certainly could be expected when you have a category two hurricane that goes through our area. I know Tammy was the one that was on all the calls, but the information that flowed through her from you, I thought was very valuable, and I felt that the community was quite informed and obviously working well together, because you've got Nova Scotia Power, and you've got police, and all these organizations working. So, you know, it's had a trial by, I was going to say trial by fire, but trial by hurricane for you, but I thought it was good. Any, anything else? Council Graves?
Just in regards to working towards one consolidated page for Facebook, talk a little bit more with that.
So that's something that I'm going to propose to, that's just for the Remo, so trying to get information out, so it won't take away from any of the five units itself. It's just if we, and it's going to be proposed to the communication staff as well as CAOs, do we want to have a focus page just for emergency management? We have one for Twitter, don't know if we, if it's chosen not to do it for Facebook, we might not need it for Twitter. So it's having that conversation to see where we actually need to go forward with it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Anything else from council? No. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Coming in, and again, welcome.
Cheers. Appreciate that.
Our next item is RFP 2019-10, supply of three pumping station replacement pumps. In this case, we have a recommendation to not award. I don't know if there's more information that we really need, other than we're going to go back out to tender. We have time to go back out to tender. But there was, well, I'll just summarize if you don't mind, that we have pump stations that are built a certain size and shape, and power requirement and pump requirement, and we need to make sure that whatever we replace inside them is exactly go-to-fit and be all the requirements that we need. And there was some clarification that was required that not all the bidders received. And so it was felt that the best course of action was to go back out. So that is the person that we have in front of you. Any questions to the engineer regarding that?
Like the motion, your worship?
Yeah, let's have a motion, then we'll go for questions.
Yes, I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and legal counsel let RFP 2019-10, supply of three pumping stations replacement pumps not be awarded due to the bids being declared noncompliant.
Thank you, seconded by Council Thurbin. Questions? Council Thurbin?
Yeah, Larry, none of these pumps is getting replaced, but we're going in to do some work later on with the...
No, there's no anticipation.
Down on King Street?
Not for these ones, no.
Okay. Good.
Good question. Any else? All right, hearing nothing else. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next is RFP 2019-11, Christmas on La Haye event title sponsorship naming rights. So this was advertised and went out, and good news?
I think so.
Came back. Always nice to have a naming sponsor. Someone prepared to make a motion? That will kind of explain who that is. Council Graves?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award RFP 2019-11, Christmas on La Haye event title sponsorship naming rights to the Halifax Herald Limited for a two-year agreement valued at $51,000 per year for each year of the agreement.
Thank you, seconded by Council McGuinness.
They're a great partner.
Yeah, and they've been a supporter for many, many, many years. Anything else? No, hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is recommendation of director of finance, permanent financing.
So we have a number of completed capital projects that require debt financing. The amount is $563,000. The request is to have council approve the resolution of debenture issuance subject to interest rate. Interest rate suggested by Municipal Finance Corporation is 4%. It would probably be less than that, but, oh, sorry, 5.5%. Will probably be less than that, but the intent of this is that as long as it's not above 5.5%, it doesn't have to come back to council for approval, and everything can move more smoothly through the process. So there's a resolution there for approval, unless you have any questions?
This is for the public. This was for a dump truck, wastewater treatment plant, anaerobic digest to cover, traffic signal upgrade, tobacco, and public works storage shed, just in case people were wondering what that was for. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Thurbin? I know you love these long ones.
I do. I just love it. Whereas Section 91 of the Municipal Government Act provides that a municipality is authorized to borrow money, subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs hereafter the minister. And whereas the resolution of council to borrow for various purposes was approved by the minister on April the 5th, 2019, and whereas Clause 91.1B of the Municipal Government Act authorizes a council to determine the amount and term of and the rate of interest on each debenture, when the interest on the debenture is to be paid and where the principal and interest on the debenture are to be paid. And whereas Clause 91.2 of the Municipal Government Act states that in accordance with the Municipal Finance Corporation Act, the mayor or warden and clerk or person designated by the council by policy shall sell and deliver the debentures on behalf of the municipality at the price, in the sums, and in the manner deemed proper. Be it therefore resolved, that under the authority of Section 91 of the Municipal Government Act, the town of Bridgewater borrow by the issue and sale of debentures a sum or sums not exceeding $563,000 for a period not to exceed 10 years, subject to the approval of the minister. And that the sum be borrowed by the issue and sale of debentures of the town of Bridgewater in the amount that the mayor or warden and clerk or the person designated by council deems proper, provided the average interest rate on the debentures not exceed the rate of 5.5%. That the debenture be arranged with a Nova Scotia Municipal Finance Corporation with interest to be paid semi-annually and the principal payments made annually. That this resolution remain in force for a period not exceeding 12 months from the passing of this resolution.
Thank you, seconded by Council Frasier. Any further comments?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is Smart Cities Contribution Agreement. So as the public knows, we won the Smart Cities Challenge, and then from that began the work to put the agreement in place. And Mr. De Breed is here. I totally didn't even see you walk in. You're like stealth mode, just like float in on a cloud. So this is nice to have this come before us now. I know it's odd to, for me, it's odd to have it after, but it's nice to have it. So I don't know if you needed to walk through this, or if council had questions about it.
I have some brief speaking notes if you're interested.
Sure.
Okay. So thank you for having me here this evening. So what you have in front of you is the final draft agreement of the Agreement for Energy Poverty Reduction Project presented for your approval. A resolution confirming town council's approval of the agreement is necessary to complete the agreement itself, as it states in Clause 4.8, so the council's motion needs to be numbered and dated there. The agreement is currently at about the 99% stage of completion and subject to further change from what you see before you, but those are expected to be non-substantive or formatting changes only. We're still working through the final edits there. We found the agreement so far to be generally in line with town council's expectations and needs, including town council's approved preliminary design of the Energy Poverty Reduction Program that was approved on February 25th, 2019, which was our submission to Infrastructure Canada. And through this agreement, the government of Canada will provide the town with $5 million in Smart Cities Challenge grant funding between this fiscal year and fiscal year '24-'25, so that's six, that's over a period of six fiscal years. And in exchange, the town will commit to achieving the project outputs and outcomes defined in Schedules A1 and A2, which again lines up with our proposal. Payments are triggered by a series of 12 project milestones, which are described in Schedules A1 and A2, and there is a project holdback of 10%, $500,000, which is assigned to Milestone 12. I won't go into too much detail, I guess, other than if council has questions about any of the specific content. There are a few indications of town support for the project, including an in-kind contribution through existing staff, and an estimate for additional provincial and federal grants toward the project, which we are fairly confident that we can make good progress on, but of course, those are uncommitted funds at this time. There are a number of cash and in-kind contributions from the town of Bridgewater that would be referred to departmental work plans as part of their annual budgeting processes, but those are in line with past town investments, for example, in active transportation improvements, sidewalk improvements, and transit, public transit specifically, as part of the town's contribution toward the initiative in order to improve mobility within the community. Staff's recommendation is that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the draft agreement for the Energy Poverty Reduction Project with the government of Canada and authorize the CAO to finalize and execute the agreement in a manner similar to the document you're reviewing this evening.
Questions from members of council? Council McGuinness?
I may have read this wrong, but it's more curiosity from me. I read in there that the town has to go on two visits a year to other regions to talk about this plan at our expense?
Yes and no. We have to do a national or international event, but the cost of that is eligible for to come from the Smart Cities money. So, for example, in two weeks, I'm speaking at the C40 Conference in Copenhagen, those costs associated with that will be put through the Smart Cities Challenge budget, so not out of the town budget.
Correct. That's an eligible expense.
Yeah, and it is a requirement.
That's a good question. Council Graves, just a question in regards to in-kind contributions to existing staff of 1.2 million. Does that mean that something will not get done in order for this to get done? If staff, they have to, you obviously have to take something away in order to do something. So what would be an example of that?
So the something that is, so those staffing levels are essentially to do the Energized Bridgewater program. So it includes, for example, the Sustainability Planner, the Junior Planner, and a number of other staff positions that would have been put toward the Energized Bridgewater program anyway, and those are now being counted as one complete package toward the Smart Cities Initiative. So it's, the Smart Cities work is providing additional resources that is building on the Energized Bridgewater program plan and actually adding a lot more value to that. And what we're not doing is the old program without the Smart Cities element. Yeah.
Other questions? Council Graves?
And have we found a new office for the Smart Cities team, or any updates on that?
We're looking internally within the existing building envelope here, with some movement of positions around. We're confident that we found the space. So rather than having to take that Smart Cities funding and pay for rent, which we estimated to be close to $200,000 over the five years, that we'll be doing some renovations within this building. That will be more along the line of $50,000, which will enable us to accommodate the Smart Cities team in a very accessible part of the building.
Sure. Any other questions? I appreciate the questions from council. I always look at this and remind myself that we were going to do this work anyway. Whether we won this or not, we were going to go through the Energized Bridgewater plan. Timeline was different, and the cost would have been borne 100% by us. And now we have a funding partner that's funding $5 million of the $7.8 million project cost, so thank goodness for that, just for our people that are going to reap the rewards of this project. So again, I can't thank our team enough for getting us through this. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Frasier?
Yes, your worship. The town council for the town of Bridgewater approved the draft agreement for the Energy Poverty Reduction Project with the government of Canada and authorized the CAO to finalize and execute the agreement in a manner similar to the draft agreement outlined in Document 18-097.
Thank you, seconded by Council Graves. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. The next item is giving notice to, that we're going to be bringing forward attendance management policy. So again, we've consistently, actually over the last few meetings, made a motion to give notice to let the public know that at a future meeting. So in this case, at the October 14th meeting, we will be addressing an item. And so in this case, it's a notice to let the public know that we're going to be dealing with the attendance management policy on the 14th of October. I don't know if you need to add any more than that.
No, I think the intent is to have a debate at that meeting.
Okay.
Did you hear that?
Yeah. Okay. So someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the October 14th, 2019 council meeting, a proposed attendance management policy will be considered to enable an effective attendance management program, which will provide a supportive work environment that will reduce absenteeism and thus increase morale, employer-employee relations, reduce overtime costs, and improve productivity.
Wonderful. Thank you, seconded by Council Thurbin. Questions? None? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Down to business arising unfinished business, campaign to protect offshore oil in Nova Scotia offshore drilling requests for a resolution of council. As you know, we had a delegation appear before council, in the summer, I believe, and spoke to us about this issue and asking us to formally pass a motion to, that you have in your package. Other municipalities that have, Chester, Mahone Bay, Town of Shelburne, Municipality of Shelburne, and a number of others. Council, in doing its due diligence, did ask to get some information. We always want to hear both sides of the story, so we did receive a presentation from the industry, and so I appreciate council wanting to do its due diligence before making a decision. You do have a motion in front of you, or what is the wish of council? Council McDonald?
Whereas a healthy marine environment is critical to industries like fishing and tourism that are the primary lifeblood of Nova Scotia coastal communities, and whereas it is our responsibility to protect and nurture our local economies, it is also our right and the right of our citizens to be consulted on all major developments that might impact those economies. And whereas the catastrophic effect of a major oil spill at an offshore drill site is unthinkable, yet public knowledge of the risk and potential consequences of such a spill remains inadequate, therefore, the town council for the town of Bridgewater hereby calls for a full and independent public inquiry into the pros and cons of the oil industry exploration in offshore Nova Scotia to provide our communities who bear the lion's share of the risk of a disaster in the offshore, a full appreciation of the extent of that risk and of the steps that we can take to minimize it, and also call for a moratorium on all further oil and gas exploration in the offshore pending the completion of that inquiry.
Thank you, seconded by Council Graves. Discussion? Council McDonald?
It's my opinion that when it comes to fulfilling our duty to protect something as important and as delicate as our oceans, we simply can't ask too many questions or have too much information, and I therefore support the request that we join the call for a full and independent public inquiry.
Thank you. Other comments from Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I'm a little uncomfortable, and unfortunately, will probably vote against this motion, just with regard to the last statement with regard to calling for a moratorium on all further gas, oil and gas exploration, primarily because we had two sort of viewpoints on this, the second of which from industry seemed to give me the impression that they were doing everything they can and put measures in place, safety measures and so on, in place. And I also don't have a clear understanding of how long a public inquiry would take and that study would take, and so I know there's a lot of employment, and obviously, the economy of Nova Scotia relies not only on oil and gas exploration, but obviously other fishing and so on and so forth. There's a lot of employment at stake to just literally call for a moratorium or have a moratorium put in place without understanding the timeline of the public inquiry, I guess.
Thank you. Other comments from members of council?
Mr. The opportunity, and I don't know if there is an appetite for this around the table, but to not include the moratorium, assuming that an inquiry may give information that would make that decision, it would change that decision on whether a moratorium was...
Council is free to amend the motion as they see fit?
I'm, sorry. I would feel comfortable removing the last line because I think we're asking for, one, we're asking for an inquiry, kind of with regard to the pros and cons, but we were calling for sort of contradicting, that's my view of, I would feel more comfortable removing the last line until the inquiry is done.
So, so a motion to amend the motion? Council Graves?
So in regards to the moratorium, they want to stop oil and gas production just in case something does happen. So it seems to me, these are long-term projects, and I think that you'd probably want to make sure that it's safe, 100% safe, before you start mucking around with the waters outside on our coast. So the moratorium, I think, is necessary because you really don't want production of oil and gas off the coast if it's going to be too dangerous and if it's going to affect the livelihood of fishers and the tourism people. So, and in regards to the, in regards to the inquiry, I think, I think it'll, I think it should just take its course. It's pretty important. Once you put in an oil and gas development, it's 10, 20 years, right? And you have no control over it.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I mean, I guess we did hear, we did hear from the industry that said they're, you know, they have their safety measures and they have their standards. So it's, I see, I see both sides. My concern with it is, I guess maybe along the same lines as deputy mayors, but it's just, if we're going to have an inquiry, like calling for a moratorium until there's an inquiry is fine unless there's no inquiry. There has to be something, like we've, for me, the bottom line is I need someone to look into this to make sure it's going to be okay. look into this to make sure it's going to be okay. So I would, I would, if there was going to be an amendment, I would want to have a date. I would want something that goes to the, to the province of Nova Scotia to say, you know, we have concerns and we want an inquiry, but we want an inquiry in a reasonable amount of time. We don't want nothing to be done until 2030, right? So it's trying to find that balance of, the group that came has said, we'd like a moratorium on this until there's an inquiry. It's fair, they're asking for an inquiry, they're not saying, we want no drilling, they want to know that those safety measures are in place. But again, my concern is, government doesn't tend to move super quick and it's, I am worried that it may never happen. So to me, it's, it's either you remove the word moratorium or you add an inquiry within 24 months, an inquiry begin within 12 months.
I accept that.
Add, add that, to find that balance, you know what I mean? Because I understand what you're saying, and you know, and I understand Counselor Graves and Deputy Mayor Tanner and what you're saying.
And it is a moratorium on, on exploration. Any, any wells that have, have been discovered will be used, I'm assuming.
Well, that is what the motion is, right? It's, it's on new...
New exploration?
Yeah. Yeah, and it's a full and independent public inquiry into the pros and cons of oil industry exploration in offshore Nova Scotia. So it's, again, it's, to me, it's not saying, we're asking you to say, never, ever, ever shall there be exploration. It's saying, we're asking you to make sure that any exploration has done all it can to mitigate the risk. So to me, again, I, I would like to see the amendments, I think you can do what you want with that, but I'd like to see it say, let's pick a date. Inquiry must start within 12 months.
I think 24 months would be reasonable.
24 months.
So we'd need a amendment to...
For the amendment.
Calling for a moratorium on all further oil and gas exploration in the offshore pending the commencement of the inquiry within the, within 24 months?
Yeah.
And just commencement in that case?
What's, well, council, do you want to...
I have no idea how long that type of inquiry will take.
I don't think we can reasonably ask that it be completed in a certain amount of time because we don't have a lot of days. And I wouldn't want to then be the person responsible for somebody going on the cheap and saying, ah, we can get this done in a couple of weeks. I'd rather just say it started. Yeah, within 24 months. Okay? So do we have to...
You have to have a, a motion to amend, yeah.
Someone move that amendment?
So move that amendment 24 months.
Do they move, the original mover and seconder have to do it?
I believe they have to agree to the amendment.
Okay, do you agree to the amendment? And it was seconded by...
Graves.
Graves.
Yeah. Do you agree to the amendment? All right.
So we're voting on the amendment.
Okay. All those in favor of the amended motion? Those opposed? Motion is carried.
So now we vote on the motion as amended.
Okay. All the, oh, do we need a new mover and seconder for that?
No, you have the original, yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. That is called democracy and compromise. Thank you very much. Does I see, I see you came right up.
Partway.
No, that's great. And I appreciate everyone who expressed their opinions, that's what we want. We don't want people to not share their, their thoughts. Each of us represents over 700 people, so we have to be able to express that. So thank you very much. Next item is proposed remuneration. Is that right this time? Remuneration did wrong again.
I'm not saying it.
Revisions. Policy 64, annual, the adjustments, council members. So we gave notice the last meeting that this was coming forward.
Yeah. So this is directly attributable to Smart Cities. When council established the remuneration and you review your remuneration policy just before the coming elections, so every four years, you, you debate whether or not you want to review them. So when you established it the last time, there was no Smart Cities, no demand that would be imposed in terms of representing the town at, as you noted, two events per year at a minimum. And therefore, council was asked to consider revising this policy now and then doing a complete review prior to the 2020. But the revisions now would address the time requirements required for representing the town as it relates to Smart Cities. So this would be a compensation at a rate of 250 per day or 125 per half day for participation in Smart Cities events where the elected representative has been requested to attend and or speak as a requirement of the funding agreement, as we note it, or the attendance has been approved by council and the event will require a minimum of 3.5 hours. It has to be at least half a day. And the reason for the second part, the attendance being approved by council, is we are getting a lot of requests and we may decide, as council may decide as, as a council for the town, that these are good things to be at, to represent our town and get that exposure of our program, both provincially and nationally, perhaps internationally. So that's why it's written that way. So those two required automatically will be compensated. Anything in addition to that will be subject to the approval of council.
Questions? We're just getting busier. Getting busier, busier. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor McDonald?
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve, approve the revised policy 64, annual remuneration, remuneration? I think I got it. Adjustment. Council members as presented in Document 19-110 as policy 64 for the town effective immediately.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And I've been handed a note, like we're in class. We have to go back to item 10.6 and clarify, do I just have to clarify just by reading your note? That the, the date for the, we gave notice that the next council meeting should be the 15th of October, not the 14th of October. Thanksgiving kind of snuck its way in there. So again, notice for the, the attendance management policy will be at the October 15th council meeting. So Paul will see on the Tuesday, not the Monday. Awesome. Next item is proposed designated funds policy.
This one, council gave notice at the last meeting as well. And what this does is it establishes a policy of council that creates a structure under which donations can be received by the town and the, and given out as grants for projects. And essentially what the benefit is, is that a community group can apply for a project, council can approve that project as a project that would be eligible for funding under this program, then residents can come give donations and receive charitable donation receipts for the same. It's clear to the applicants as well as the community group that council will disperse the funds as they deem appropriate. So there's no guarantees, but the intent would be is that if it's an approved project by council, then the funds could be received and dispersed accordingly. This will also assist with just clarifying the procedure around some donations you receive now, like for the field house, that type of thing. So it creates that structure and, and makes it clear how council intends to disperse the grant.
Questions from members of Counselor Graves?
So is there costs associated with managing this money?
There is a, some municipalities do have a small administrative fee, so you can do that. I think, I can't remember what the District of Lunenburgs is, like 4% or 5%, maybe, maybe five, somewhere around there. But I would suggest that it's going to be a minimal amount for staff in terms of our costs to receive, we basically receive it, put it in and track it, keep it in a separate fund, and then when council passes their motion to give the grant, then we take, do that process to give them the grant. So it wouldn't be a huge impact, but you do, you do have the option, if you wish, to have an administrative fee on top of that.
Thank you. That's a good question, Counselor Durbin.
Yeah, the last one I was involved with was Heritage Advisory Committee, where we collected funds for signage at the cemetery in order to collect the funds in, in trust for our project, the town could give receipts for income tax purposes where we couldn't. And I think it helped us with our funds, and I, I don't think it takes a lot of staff time. And I hate to see us start charging volunteer groups for taking tax receipts, kind of counterproductive.
So my question was, because it, it is a good question. There's not, we don't do this for a lot of groups, we do that for the field house. We have a request that, for another group.
Yeah. Yeah. I would suggest you probably won't have a lot, but the requirements for charitable status are a little bit more stringent now, I think, than perhaps they may have been in the past as well. So you may see community groups see this as an opportunity to do fundraising for projects that they're not able to get charitable donation receipts for, but so far, you're right, we've had one and this one will be the second one.
So, you know, to Counselor Graves' point, there may become a time where if it's starting to cost a lot in terms of staff time or, more importantly, taking staff away from their regular duties, we may have to revisit it. So it is something that we could just keep an eye on, and I would ask maybe the Director of Finance to just let us know if we're starting to get to that point where we should be looking at that.
And council will see it on the front end too, because the, they have to apply before we will do it for them. So council has to have a look at their project and decide if, if that's something that we want to support.
Yeah. I just don't know if it's, is that four groups? Is it three groups, but...
I don't expect it to be...
Massive donation? Is it when we get to 10 groups? I don't know what the threshold is.
Yeah, and we could, we could monitor that, like you're saying.
Yeah, for sure.
Counselor Durbin?
In reply to that, I know with Heritage Advisory, it was just over for a short period of time. Now that project's done, so there's no more receipts being issued on, on that one.
Yeah. And some, like the Heritage Advisory Committee is really kind of a committee of the town anyway. So, you know, we wouldn't even question something like that.
Counselor McDonald?
Just for clarification, I, I don't know if an application has been prepared yet, but does it have any requirement that it's a project that the, the town is connected with in some way? Or could it be any nonprofit fundraising for anything?
No, it doesn't have to be anything that the town would own the, say, the property of or anything. It could be completely independent of the town. I think you would, just as when you issue any grant, you have to be satisfied that it's, it's something that's going to benefit the town and it's something you may have provided otherwise, if not for this organization.
But all requests have to come before council.
That's right. Yeah.
So that's probably the first thing we would have to look at is, is this project something that really is for the people of the, of the town or the community? It doesn't have to be necessarily the town. Because it shouldn't, it shouldn't be for something that isn't, if it's kind of, I want to say if it's none of our business, but you know what I mean? Like if it's not something that really should be coming before council, then it shouldn't be coming before...
Yeah, because eventually you have to approve a grant.
Grant.
So...
Where the field house was absolutely, it mattered, yeah.
And in the end, are we aware of how much responsibility we hold then? If we've collected funds, provided receipts, and we're now providing a grant, and something goes wrong with their bookkeeping?
Yeah, we're not...
We're not caught up in that?
No. It's just like any organization that we give grants to now.
Right.
Though, you know, the same scenario could play out, but no. That's why it's preferable to give the grant.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Frasier?
Yes. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved the designated funds policy as presented in Document 19-108A as policy 97 for the town effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any further questions?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is on-call pay policy, personnel policy and procedures manual, Section 5.7, retroactivity.
Yeah. So we approved the policy at our last council meeting, I believe, and at that time we reported to you that we've already anticipated that this would become something that we'd be bringing forward to council, so we included funds in the budget that went back to April 1. What we forgot to do is make sure the motion referenced that it was retroactive to April 1. So this motion will clarify that the on-call, where we're bringing the union and the non-union to parity, would be retroactive to April 1. And it is accounted for within our budget this year.
All right. Pretty straightforward. Questions? Nope? I'll play it.
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Sure.
Yes? Okay. I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the on-call pay policy, personnel policies and procedures manual, Section 5.7, as presented in Document 19-085 as policy for the town, retroactive to April 1, 2019.
Seconded by Counselor Graves. Questions? It's fair. Yeah. Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. New business, audited financial statements. Save the most exciting for last.
So before you this evening are the audited financial statements for the year ended March 31st, 2019. So just a brief summary of consolidated statement of financial position, or otherwise known as the balance sheet. So financial assets of 28.8 million, liabilities 13.5 million, net assets, net financial assets of 15.2 million, non-financial assets, which are all our tangible capital assets, that's mainly what makes up that balance, which are things like our buildings and our equipment and our roads and our sewers, 77.5 million for a total of 92.7 million dollars. And consolidated statement of financial activities, or the income statement, consolidated revenue of 20 million, consolidated expenditures of 18.6 million for a net surplus of 1.43 million dollars. Again, these are consolidated, so it includes a lot of things that are not used for the tax rate calculation and excludes some amounts that are used for the tax rate calculation. So it includes things like capital revenue, which we actually just keep within the capital fund and, and fund capital projects. It's not part of the tax rate calculation. It includes depreciation, which is not an expense for purposes of the tax rate calculation because we don't fund depreciation. It excludes principal payments on debt, which are part of the tax rate calculation. So it, it's, you have to understand what's behind that number before you start talking about our 1.43 million dollar surplus. So just to kind of get, let you know how that translates into an operating surplus or the surplus for the tax rate calculations, so it starts at 1.343 million. There's almost 1.8 million dollars worth of things that are in consolidated income but not included in the tax rate calculation. And then there are 2.8 million dollars worth of adjustments for things that are not included in consolidated income but are included in the tax rate calculation. So our actual year-end surplus on the operating fund was 447,000. And that's to do with, some, some to do with revenues, such as interest revenue that were over budget, and then savings and expenditures as well. And you can see that there, that the revenue variance, 118,000 dollars positive, positive variance in expenditures, 300, almost 329,000, and a surplus of 447,000, which is required to be transferred to the reserves. So that will end up in the operating reserve, in the undesigned portion of the operating reserve. This is a summary of capital fund highlights. So our 1819 capital budget, which includes carryforwards and subsequent approvals like Smart Cities, 7.645 million. Our actual capital expenditures were 3.8 for a difference of 3.8 million. And of that 3.8 million, 2.7 was carried forward into 1920. And then there's about a million dollars or 1.1 million dollars, which are, is a combination of, of savings on projects. If you recall at budget time last year, we also deleted some projects, we moved some projects out, rebudgeted them in future years. So that's what that 1.1 million is. So on the cap, on the debt, we issued 1.227 million and repaid 945,000. These are our position of our reserves. So if you were to look on the financial statements, you would see that we have 3.77 million in operating reserves, but 964,000 of that is, is allocated to things like next year's capital budget, capital carryforwards. There are also specific funds set aside for specific purposes in the operating reserve fund. So what's actually available is 2.8 million. In the capital reserve, we have about 2.2 million, but we have 908, or almost 909,000 in capital reserve loans, where we have borrowed money in the past from the capital reserve fund to, to fund capital projects. So those are being repaid, but until they're repaid, that money is actually not available. We don't have the cash until the loans are repaid. And the third reserve we have is for the special purpose tax, four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So that special purpose tax that we've collected that will be used for repayment of the, the debt on the LCLC. And that's really all I had to say, unless there are questions.
Any questions from members of council? Kind of just went through this as an audit committee, so... Anything? Thank you very much for all your work and your team's work for that. Is someone prepared to make the first motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the following unbudgeted transfers for twenty eighteen, nineteen. Donations received from operating to operating reserve to be used for the purpose specified by the donor as follows. Three thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars skate park to be used for capital funding related to the skate park, seventy-nine dollars and fourteen cents South Shore Vet Dog Zone, thirty-five dollars museum, twelve thousand remaining in the retaining wall budget from operating to operating reserve to be used for future repairs to retaining walls, fifteen thousand remaining from the funds returned to the town of the, by the facade society from operating to operating reserve to be used for facade grants in twenty nineteen, twenty, thirty-one thousand, ninety-two dollars and twenty-two cents related to the change in the landfill closure, post-closure estimate from the capital reserve fund to operating fund.
Thank you. Have a second, please. Councilor Graves? Any discussion? Question? Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Would you like to make the next motion as well?
Sure. That Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the audited financial statements for the town of Bridgewater and the town of Bridgewater Trust Fund for the year ended March thirty-first, twenty nineteen, as reviewed by the audit committee.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Thorburn. Any discussion on that?
Question.
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. We are at the end of the agenda. Thank you very much. Thank you for everyone's discussion, and just a reminder that Bridgewater Transit on the twenty-fifth, so Wednesday, celebrating its second birthday at South Shore Center, the mall.
Fifty-seven thousand riders.
Fifty-seven thousand riders.
In two years.
In two years.
Unbelievable.
And in July, we had thirty-one hundred riders. That was our highest month in July. And we continue to hear stories from people about the value of, of transit and what it's done. So it is something we're celebrating, so hopefully people will join us down at the, at the mall, down at the...
Tim Hortons.
The Tim Hortons end, down there for some cake, and I believe there's some homemade birthday cards that we received, so hope to see you there. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Councilor Thorburn, Deputy Mayor Tanner, we adjourned. We have an end camera meeting following this one.